All right, thank you everybody for being here today. I have something I gotta read here. This meeting is being held in the council chambers which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. May I have roll call please?
Mayor Harris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali?
Here.
All right, will we all please stand for the pledge?
Oh, excuse me. Sorry. Vice Chairman Conant?
My bad. Give me a couple of meetings to get back in practice here.
Vice Chairman Conant?
Here. Conant, present.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor McKelley?
Here.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Here.
All right, now we go.
Then we do me last.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know.
They threw me off loop.
All right, sorry about that. And we are here today to discuss the revenue measure ad hoc committee. And we're gonna start out with Ms. Diana Langley, City Manager of City of Yuba City.
Good evening, Mayor and Chair. We also have Steve Smith over here, the CAO for Sutter County. So we are both here before you tonight to do a presentation related to the revenue ad hoc meetings. So the revenue ad hoc committees, the intent is to explore potential November 2024 revenue measure and define priorities. Two members from each of the city council and the Board of Supervisors were designated for the ad hoc committees. It also included the city manager, myself, and then also Steve Smith, the county CAO. And the term was for one year for the ad hoc committees. The city's ad hoc committee was comprised of Mayor Sean Harris, Councilmember Boomgarden, and then the Sutter County was comprised of Chair Baines and then Supervisor McKelley. I want to thank the citizens that participated in the Yuba City Citizen Ad Hoc Committee. There were 17 stakeholders, several members who were also on the Sutter County Revenue Measure Citizen Committee, and they provided invaluable input to the revenue ad hoc committee. We held three meetings, and at one of the meetings Chair Baines and Steve Smith participated. And if part of the committee members could raise their hands so you can see who in the audience was on the Citizen Ad Hoc Committee, so raise your hands please. So thank you. Yes, thank you. So during the discussion period, Steve and I met on a regular basis. The revenue ad hocs for the city and the county held three meetings, and then in late November, we had a facilitated meeting. And I would just like to thank John Cassidy for coordinating the facilitator. It was retired Major General Jake Palumbo who came in and coordinated the discussions. For the last few months, the city council has identified priorities for a revenue measure that includes roads, which would address our $150 million of deferred maintenance, fire to maintain staffing levels, replace Station 1 to accommodate two engine companies, and maintain service levels to CSAG, and then for our police department to increase homelessness response efforts and take over what we call the Beat Six area, which is the Walton-Happy Park service area. Also throughout this time, the city council has expressed a strong desire to support county services that directly affect city residents' safety. And so that includes the District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, as well as homeless response efforts. And this, I'll turn this over to Steve.
Thank you. So for county priorities, and this isn't perfectly aligned with the board's total priorities, this is more for spending priorities related to greatest need, related to public safety. The sheriff's office, of course, it's very expensive to run a law enforcement agency and particularly a jail. Over the past 11 or so years since public safety realignment was implemented by the state, turning local jails into local prisons, jail medical has gone from about $380,000 a year to about $4 million a year. Jail staffing and those costs are a priority, as well as an HVAC system that could cost up to $8 million, as recommended by the Sutter County Grand Jury. It would also be advantageous to have a dedicated homelessness deputy out of the sheriff's office that could go to areas like the river bottoms to ensure that residents are able to recreate there and take their families back to the river, as opposed to being worried about possible illegal encampments. Also, as Diana mentioned, a transition of services from the sheriff's office to the Beat Six or Beat Seven, depending on which agency you're talking about, the Walton-Happy Park area. Recently, the Sutter County Superior Court added a judge. That's because of the number of cases, so that was enabled by the state. So you can imagine how much that extra caseload is putting a strain on our district attorney and public defender departments. So there's a great need there to increase staffing, to maintain and/or reduce case load per attorney. And then, as far as roads, throughout the county, the county has about 130 or more small bridges that do not qualify for state or federal funding because they're less than 20 feet. But each of those costs are somewhere around $1 million and a half dollars to replace. We additionally have failing water crossings in areas, something, total water crossings throughout the county, somewhere between 600 and 700, I believe. And also, of course, the roads and arterials around Yuba City, but still in the unincorporated that need attention. Additionally, rural fire, when the county ran Measure A last year, a big part of that was about public safety and rural fire. And we're, at the county, we're looking at something possibly separate and specific to address fire in the rural areas. You may be aware, it's a special district, and it's a county service area, which is a form of special district, and should cover its needs from residents within that district. We're considering and looking at something that would consider all of rural fire, including CSA, CND, and East Nicholas and Pleasant Grove, and also Meridian and Robbins as well.
So a measure within the city, a quarter percent measure would generate approximately $3.75 million, half a percent, $7.5 million, and a 1% of $15 million. And this slide just shows that of the 180-plus cities within California that have a population of over 50,000, Yuba City is one of only eight agencies that still has a tax rate of 7.25%. And what this just reflects is the need for cities to develop additional revenue sources to be able to supply and provide city services. So the recommendation for the November 2024 ballot is a general tax led by Yuba City within city limits at 1%, which would equate to approximately $15 million per year, with a priority on roads and public safety, with the intent to revenue share with Sutter County, include a citizen oversight committee with no competing or overlapping initiatives, and in effect until ended by voters. So at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to the revenue ad hoc committee members.
Great, thank you very much. I think we can start by Chairman Baines prepared a, or he made a video statement since he was unable to be here due to a family emergency. We can play that first.
Thank you for allowing me, under the circumstances, to record this video for playback at the December 19th joint meeting of the Sutter County Board of Supervisors and City Council of Yuba City. As a representative of the revenue ad hoc committee for Sutter County, I was honored to partner with Supervisor McKelley, Mayor Harris, Councilmember Boomgarden, and city and county staff to work collaboratively in addressing the needs of the city and county, and the role each plays in providing vital services to the public. The joint recommendation of the ad hoc committees recognizes the significant role the county plays in providing services to all residents of the county, whether they live inside or outside of the city limits. It also recognizes the city's primary role, providing critical public services within city limits. Both the city and county provide services that benefit all residents of Sutter County and those living throughout the region. The results of our good faith discussions over several months make sense and will provide continuation and enhancement of local government services. Therefore, it is my recommendation that the county staff work with staff of the City of Yuba City to develop a formal agreement for future consideration of the Board of Supervisors and City Council. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor McKelley, would you care to say a few words?
Yes, thank you very much. Give a quick statement and then just a couple of comments here. I agree with Chairman Baines's statement, and it's encouraging to see the county and city continue to work together on a multitude of issues. You know, from my perspective, Mayor Harris, Councilmember Boomgarden, and City Manager Diana Langley worked diligently and professionally, as did the county team, to come to an agreement. Additionally, the joint project fund is a brilliant idea that will help ensure the future generations of boards and councils, and will continue to work collaboratively on beneficial projects. If the full city council and Board of Supervisors ultimately approve a tax sharing agreement based upon the work of the ad hoc committees, then it was time well spent that can stand to benefit the region through improved roads, critical services. Let me, let me say this. First, I know I mentioned it early on, but the citizens group who helped us out, thank you again so much for the time that you all put in, all of you. Thank you very much. And also, there, there sometimes is a lot made, we hear about this all the time, that the city of Yuba City and the county don't get along. That is not true. All right, I wanna dispel any of that right now. You know, we work very well with these gentlemen, and have, and I consider them my friends. And, and that's what you need. Actually, you know, Mayor Harris, you said it perfectly before while we were at a parade. We have to have these moments where we just get away from all the work and spend time with each other because it's developing those relationships that doesn't let you just walk away from the table and not come back, right? You keep coming back. We don't agree, we, you know, going into this thing, we, we all thought that, you know, we know we're, we're not all gonna be happy with the deal. And anyways, just like working with all these gentlemen and want to dispel any rumors that people think that we don't get along or don't work well together, it is absolutely not true, and it's been a pleasure to work with these gentlemen, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. Councilmember Boomgarden?
This is a, this is a good moment, I think, and represents, in my estimation, good government. As Supervisor McKelley mentioned, you know, it's never easy to get into negotiations. You know, everyone wants to win, no one wants to lose, but when you have the best thing for the community as a goal, I think that the wise and professional heads prevail. There was a quotation, of course, my phone went dead, I had it here, if you allow me. It says, you know, "The best negotiations happen when both sides try to give the other what they want as much as possible." And that, that's kind of the premise that I know the mayor and I went into, and the city manager went in, knowing that there are needs, and that there are overlapping needs, as has been mentioned. And when you adopt that philosophy, then you realize that, you know, working together, we're going to achieve a lot more than we are, you know, being selfish. This, this may very well be the first type of a relationship and/or tax measure in the state of California. I mean, it's been represented that, from others, that, you know, this is, you know, this is, I don't wanna say earth-shattering, but it is something that is not the norm, and if, if approved, I, I think is a good testament to the folks that have been elected to represent the citizens of this county. As I mentioned, it's good government. I think there's mutual benefit in what we're going to present. I do wanna thank some folks as well, if you'll allow me. First and foremost, of course, Stephen, Steve Smith and Diana for sitting through and doing the work in the background. Both of them were extremely professional, and I thank them for their, their help. The citizens ad hoc committee, believe me, we paid attention to what you had to say, the input, both in the meetings and, and the phone calls or emails outside of the meetings. That's the reason we had an ad hoc committee. We would've loved to have had everybody, and there's gonna be a heck of a lot more opportunity for people to participate as this thing goes on, because remember, we cannot impose a tax. We can propose one, but never impose one. And the citizens, at the end of the day, will be the ones that decide whether or not this revenue measure moves forward. I wanna thank our district attorney, Jen Dupree, and our sheriff, Brandon Barnes, for coming into our meetings. That's not typical either, and I think that they added a lot to an understanding of what their needs are, especially as it relates to overlapping needs within the city. And it made, it made it that much easier to say, hey, look, you know, sharing's a good thing here, because, again, it's of mutual benefit. And I quickly, because I know I don't wanna overlap too much here, but I would like to thank Kurt Hilbers, John Cassidy, and General Palumbo. Kurt and John, you know, I don't know that, I don't wanna offend anybody, but I don't know that there are any, any two people that care more about this community. And, and they, you know, they facilitated some of the things that got us together. And General Palumbo, on the last day, I think Supervisor McKelley talked about it, there may have been a, there may have been a moment or two where things weren't going so particularly well, and he was able to, he was able to bring us back together. So I think I'll pivot over here to the mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to have worked with Supervisor McKelley, Chair Baines, and, and hopefully the rest of the, both the council and the supervisors, as we move this thing forward for the benefit of the citizens of Sutter County and Yuba City. Thank you.
All right, and thank you very much. I can't really say it any better than that, between both you gentlemen said that the, the process was definitely interesting. We definitely capitalized on the relationships that we had built with everybody beforehand, for sure. And it was very good and very good learning experience, a good experience for General Palumbo. Thank you very much for facilitating that, gentlemen. Also wanna reiterate the thank you for the citizens committee, and sheriff, and Jen, and everybody who showed up. Diana and Steve, we couldn't have been there without your help and your input and guidance and everything. So it was definitely a group effort, a community effort, and I think when we walked out of there, you know, you go into any negotiation, you don't know what the other side's thinking, even though they're your friends, right? And so this is, this is a big deal. A lot of money and a lot of people are affected by what we were, the few of us were doing in that room. And, you know, it, it worked out really well, and I think it'd be nice to go over some details with you guys. And of course, there are some things that are yet to be determined, so bear with us on that, there's some questions still to be asked, but, and answered. But I can give you the highlights of what we came up with. And definitely has been a positive thing. I think, I agree with Nick in that I've never felt an animosity with the county at all, even though I've been accused of having an animosity with the county. I don't. I walk up to these guys, we give each other a hug, don't even care, it's just, is what it is. In fact, I can't get him off my leg half the time, he's thanking me so much. Pretty heavy to get in my car, though. But, but no, it, it was just a good thing. And the air is a lot lighter, let's face it, because we don't know. And now, and now we do, that we were all serious about wanting to come together, and I think we did that. So here we go. All right, so, as we've talked about, the revenue sharing model, we will create a master tax exchange agreement. This, of course, is a contingent upon approval by you all later on. We will have the approval of that master tax exchange agreement by both city council and the Board of Supervisors, which will outline the financial split, the parameters of the use of the funds. We have to be very careful, because this is going to be a general, not specific, so we can't like, say you shall spend this money on this item, otherwise, we don't, it won't qualify. So we already want some general guidelines. Also, again, to be determined, renegotiation triggers, if any, and then termination triggers, if any. Then the, like we talked about, $15 million, we're using that kind of a base, because it's anticipated that the 1% sales tax increase would generate $15 million in a year. So of that $15 million, once it's received, $10 million, 66.66% would go to the city, and $5 million of that, 33% would go to Sutter County. Now, using, moving on beyond that, using $15 million of a base, this is kind of a what-if scenario that we, we, we worked out. Any overage, and in this slide, for sake of just the demonstration, we figured, okay, how about your, number two, we have, we received $17 million versus 15. And of that, we'll have, excuse me, this is year one, $10 million to the city, $5 million to the, to the county, we have a $2 million overage. And whenever there's an overage, 50% of that overage would go to Yuba City, and then 50% would go to what we're calling a joint projects fund. And what that is, is a fund that we're gonna be, we plan on utilizing for mutual community benefit projects. Some examples, don't hold me to this, just an example or what-if thing. We talked about the roundabout, traffic light, or any kind of traffic safety measure down there. South of town, was that O'Banion? No, no, O'Banion, Oswald. Knew it was an O. On Oswald, now, is that in the city of Yuba City? No, but does it benefit the residents of Yuba City, make it safer? Absolutely, it does. Maybe it's just something to do, we wanna improve our library, or you wanna improve the museum, you name it. We were gonna decide something that's mutually beneficial to both county and city. Now, the, we're gonna have, of course, we'll appoint an ad hoc committee from the county representatives and city representatives to decide what that project is. But we also, this is a common theme here, we have a citizens advisory group that we plan on appointing, to have them give their input as well, so we can decide what to do with the extra money. Okay, so, we already talked about that. Now, same, in year number two, if we do receive, in year number one, we do receive an overage, which would be $17 million, that becomes the new base. So that's the baseline from now on, 17 million. We divided it again, 67/33, and you have in this, in this example, the other $2 million goes right back to where it was before, 50% Yuba City, 50% joint projects fund. Now, if, for example, it goes, this will only work out from year three on, if, for example, it goes below, we have the new base of $17 million. If we receive less than 17, what we have stashed in that joint projects fund would be used to bring everybody whole back to the 17 million baseline, if that makes sense. Okay? If, if we are over, then we're right back to where we're, 50/50 joint projects fund, move forward. And that's pretty much what we, so many other things are still to be determined, but that was our intent. 67/33, any overage, 50/50, with a 50% joint community benefit projects fund, which would be overseen by an ad hoc on both county and city, and a citizens advisory panel. And then when the new base resumes, as it goes up, the new base takes over. All right? And now we have a list of next steps?
Right. So as Mayor Harris noted, this is a proposed general sales tax, so we want to maintain clarity of a general tax measure. Steve, myself, and the city attorney and county council will work together to start to prepare the terms of a tax sharing agreement. And then we will also do public outreach, and then follow the election qualification rules and timeline for November 5th, 2024 election. And with that, turn it back to council and the board.
All right, anybody up here have anything further?
Through the chair.
Sir?
I wanna go ahead and thank everyone as well. I wanna thank you guys, it's been a pleasure working with you all. I wanna thank John for answering my call when I'm nervous as heck on a Friday evening or Sunday evening. John, how are we gonna work on this? How are we gonna put this together? And John's like, Mike, relax, this is what we're gonna do, I'm gonna take care of this and that. And John, thank you. Thank you, Kurt, thank you all, because this is, it's a big deal. It's a huge deal. And I wanna thank Steve and Diane. You know, and those are gonna ask, or like, well, I've had already people asking me, hey, what happens if the city and the county work on something like this? And I said, well, first of all, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great split. And they said, what do you mean? I said, well, when you drive from Sutter County to get into Yuba City, you're driving on roads, aren't you? I said, you're driving all through town, that's where you work, you work in the city there. And you're always complaining about the roads. I can't get, tell you how many complaints I get from township, you know, my, my district ends right, well, I shouldn't say the district, the county ends right there at township. So when you get past Butte House going through your end, I said, that's what you're paying for. They said, well, we already pay too many taxes as it is. I said, yeah, I know you're right about that, I couldn't agree more. And we get 1% about that, we get 1% out of that tax we get. All right? When's the last time you went out to dinner, went out and bought something, looked at your receipt, and saw what you paid for? Because I can't sit here and tell you to vote for this or vote for that, but I can tell you what I'm gonna be voting for, because I know how it's gonna affect me and my family. I know the fact that I'm gonna do whatever it takes to get a resource officer in every school district out in Sutter. So every step that I can do to get there, I'm gonna gladly vote that way. And I know my friends and family go both the same way, because they feel the same way about safety. They see that's all they care about, they wanna see that. And we're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna say this or that, but all I'm gonna ask is to reach out to one of us and ask us for the facts. Ask us for those facts. There's a lot of opinions out there, a lot of hearsay out there, but I deal in facts and real numbers. All right? So please, take the time and reach out to us, because I got a copy of our budget sitting in my office in Sutter, and I have one here in Yuba City. You're more than welcome to walk you through everything, and, and maybe you see something that I missed, but I'm just really excited to be part of this, because this is a plan that I know that if it voted on, it will work, and it will do a lot of good things for our community that I plan on being a part of forever. So thank you. Thank you, everyone that's involved to put this together. Thank you.
Through the chair. I can't say it much better than Supervisor Ziegemeyer here, so I'm not gonna add a whole lot to it, but I do wanna say thank you to the ad hoc committee for the hard work that you put into it. I know that I was involved in an ad hoc committee before with Councilman Boomgarden, and, you know, it was quite a bit of negotiations, there's a lot of feelings that go on, back and forth, but I think better heads prevail, and then a lot of support with the, you know, with our committees, too, that's, that's a big deal, with the citizens committee and the support that went on through the process. But I, too, am excited about supporting, the outcome is what really matters the most, so I'm really excited about where we're headed and looking forward to supporting.
Through the chair. So I'd like to thank the city and the county for working together, the ad hoc committee and staff, Steve and Diana. I think you guys did an outstanding job. Am I perfectly happy with this agreement? Absolutely not. I'm sure you guys on that side of the table are not happy with it either. That's a good sign of a good agreement. Neither party is pleased, that means we all hammered out a good deal. So I'd like to thank everybody for that, and it's the best we can do, and that's where we're gonna stand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anything further, Ms. McKelley?
No, I just wanna say again, a big thank you to all of you guys for all the work that you did. The citizens ad hoc is amazing, and Diana and Steve, I mean, I know how difficult that was. I, you know, I had a Q and A not too long ago, Matt and I both actually... I, I, you know, I had a Q and A not too long ago, Matt and I both, actually, we had a Q and A, and I discussed that one of the most difficult things that we're ever involved in is tax sharing negotiations. They're tough, right? They're maybe one of the most difficult things that we do. But we got through it, and we worked well together, and I'm really proud of both the city and the county and everybody, all the staff and, and all of it. And just, again, I'll reiterate again, the rumors of us not getting along is ridiculous. We do. We get along very well. And just want to say that, say thank you to all of you gentlemen, everybody, all the staff, everybody who worked on this, so I'll leave it at that, I'm talking too much.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I like how that sounds. I would like to thank the, everyone involved in this, the, from the, from the ad hocks to the county CEO and the city manager, there's, and, and the community members, there's an enormous amount of work that went into this. When somebody asks me out on the street, "What's the biggest thing on my plate?", this is the biggest thing on our plate, because everything ties in with this. As you noted earlier, the next step is public outreach, and that's where it's our jobs to get across the need, the value, and the urgency of this measure, this potential measure. And, and in addition to what Supervisor Ziegemeyer said, yes, ask us if you've got any questions, or better yet, go online. Google revenue measures 2022, 2020, there's a lot of them in the state of California, and there's a reason for that, okay? We, we're all in the same boat, we all have public safety, costs of public safety going through the roof. And so, we all, we're all in the same boat, we all have the same concerns and the same needs, and so, thank you.
Through the chair. I'm going to fall off into this crack here in a minute. No, I think the most important thing here is that we have struck a deal, something that will work for the community, and that's why I even ran, was what makes it right for the community. I am part of your committee, I've been here just my whole life. And I think finally realizing there is no separation between city residents and county residents, we're all county residents, and we all need the same things, and I think that was very evident in the discussions. I wasn't in the ad hoc, but I know that finally everyone came to the realization that that's what it was. Reach out to us, that, that's why I sit here. Ask, ask if you're confused. I have no problem having an open forum come, I'll meet you somewhere. I think that's important, to dispel any of the rumors or the lack of facts that go on. So, with that, thank you.
Through the mayor. You know, tonight is basically step one, is this is where it begins. And appreciate all the comments and how the ad hocks came together and worked with our citizens group, but truly, where I sat tonight is just like we handle all of our business from the council. We've done all the talking thus far, and I'm more interested in hearing what our citizens committee and our public has to say, to see if there's anything more we need to answer or whatnot going forward, because we can have the greatest of plans up here, but we really need to hear from, from you guys. So, before I say anything else, I would really, Mr. Mayor, like to hear from, from the public.
All right. So, you want to put your comments on hold and hear the public first?
Yes, sir.
All right. I do have two speaker cards. First one is Sheriff Barnes.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Honorable Board Members, City Council, thank you guys. I really just wanted to say thank you to our ad hoc committee for the work that they did, and then really taking the time to bring myself and our district attorney in to, you know, have a very meaningful conversation. You know, there's 58 counties, none of them are the same, you can't look to your neighbor for a, a good plan to implement, especially in Sutter County when we have certain challenges, like a lot of our, our land being in a FEMA floodplain, you just can't go out and do commercial development. So, so that's a challenge, but really having a conversation about those overlapping areas of service, and our police department does an exceptional job. But our, our department provides so many more services, CCWs, for example, running the jail, the care and custody of, of those that are in our, our care at the jail, transportation to court, court security, civil processing, boating and waterways, these are things that are used by all of our community members, right? So, I'm just very thankful that there was an open and honest conversation about those services that we provide. And to all of you, I, I just want to say thank you as well for taking the time, and I know it was said at our board meeting earlier today, that, you know, public safety is always a priority for our board. And to the council, just thank you guys for recognizing, as Mike stated, that we are one community. We all use these services, we all use these roadways, and it's our responsibility to, to take care of everybody, and so, you're to be committed for that. Whatever the next steps are, we shall see. Obviously, we'll go to the citizens, but I really just wanted to say thank you and acknowledge all the work that you did, so thank you.
Appreciate that, Sheriff. Number two, Tony Farley. Hi, Tony.
Tony Farley from South Sutter County, S U C, Happy Park. This is nice, city government and county government mutual aid, a little, little respect, mutual aid, like that. There's both county fire and city fires, county sheriff and city PD. All we need now is Daryl Gates, we need some Daryl Gates here, right? Yeah. Here, thank everybody for your service, thank you, City Government for your service, thank Sutter County for your service, thank everybody for your service, between Zachary Hamble to Leanne Link, to Lieutenant General there, to everybody, to Steve, Steve, our county CIO, nice, awesome guy, professor, right there, your professor, and also Diane Lingley, like CIA Lingley, CIA, thank her for her service, to the lawyer for there, thank all the command staff over here, we need Sean, I miss Sean, we need Sean Payby over here, thank for your service.
All right. Thank you very much, Tony. Good to hear from you, good to see you. Anybody else from the public here to say anything? Sure, John, come on up.
Who actually stepped up, thank you, and get, get elected, because those people sitting up there are the ones that have the burden. And for them to allow a citizens group to come in and give honest feedback and to really push Steve and Diana, who did the most professional job maybe this state's ever seen in rolling out facts, as Mike talked about. This is kind of a unique situation we have here, and proud of everybody up there. I've been shoulder to shoulder with all of you in different community things since I moved here in 1985. We have a lot of safety issues with our roads and what have you, and you guys are stepping up. We've got to, at some point, address it, because it just gets further and further away the more time we wait, and I think the way you guys have, have solved the issue is, is amenable and proper and appropriate. And there'll be people that'll attack it, because everybody attacks, you know, this is the most conservative group ever, I can tell you it is, under the citizens group and sitting at that council and Board of Supervisors group, that I've ever seen in this community. No one here likes to get taxed, no one wants to pay any more than they have to, but all you got to do is drive right out here on Butte House, and you're going to go boom, 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 and enough. This community was built for 8,000 or 10,000 people, we got over 100,000 people driving on our roads, doesn't matter if you're in the county or city, it's a problem, and there's other issues, obviously, you're going to get hopefully helped and covered, and we got fire to worry about down the road as well, and, and police, and, and those homeless things that are creeping up. So, I thank you for standing up and for doing the right thing and for working together, because you guys really up there deserve all the credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are we sure? All right. That is the end of this agenda, but just want to reiterate that it's so nice to be able to come here today and celebrate and inform you all about a success. It's a really good feeling, I think we're all excited about it, we have a lot of work in, yet to be done, and a lot of questions to be answered, but I am very confident that that's going to happen, just as, just like this, how we got here today. So, thank you all very much, this session is adjourned.